Lisa, are you ready?
Yes.
All right. Well, it is 5:36 and it's time for our bi-monthly meeting of the Provo City Planning Commission, and we'll bring the meeting to order. We welcome all of you here tonight. We will begin our meeting tonight with a prayer by Mr. Ed Jones. After Mr. Jones's prayer, we will have -- Mr. Jay Monroe will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Jones.
Dear Father in heaven, we are assembled here as the Provo Planning Commission. We thank thee for living in this great land and specifically in this city, in the great city of Provo. We thank thee for thy blessings. We pray for thy blessings in this meeting, that we can be judicious and wise in our decisions. We also pray for the emergency responders of the city. Will thou bless them with safety and protection? These things we ask in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
We will begin with a roll call, starting on my left. And state your name and whether you have any conflicts of interest on the item for us tonight.
Edward Jones, and no conflicts.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Jay Monroe, no conflicts.
Ross Flumm, no conflicts.
Fred Bandley, no conflicts. I can't imagine any.
Kermit McKinney, no conflicts.
Thank you. We have one item on the agenda. Items number one and two from Nathan Chappell have been continued for the immediate future. So we have one item, and that is item number three. It is indicated with a star, which means it will also require a public hearing and legislative action by the municipal council. We welcome each of you here today, and we also welcome our many, many viewers that are certainly watching us on either Channel 17 or on YouTube. Last count, thousands. Item number three is the Community Development requests an amendment to the Provo City Code, Section 14.34, to adopt regulations for the use of privately-owned alternative energy systems and to Section 14.06.020 for associated definitions. And this does have citywide impact. And we will now turn the time over to Mr. Brian Maxfield from the City First, presentation on this item. Mr. Maxfield.
My lights -- oh, there we go. I don't have a light on, so I guess it's on. Thank you. The item is really related to electrical generations for private homes, private businesses, things like that. It's divided into a couple of parts. The first one deals with the definitions. It's up on the wall there. And it lists a couple of definitions that would be added. I should mention, there's a separate section in the ordinance dealing in the state -- or let me do that again, in the city code. Maybe the state code, too. I don't know. But the city code dealing with the public, what do you call it, Provo power, you know, the energy things there. These areas don't really overlap. This one's really with the structural ideas of putting the private systems in, where they're dealing with how they transfer the energy and what inspections they need for that energy. But there are references in here that go back to that, just to make sure everybody's, you know, understanding that. And they would have to contact the Power Department. You can see there's one of the conditions was in there, that we get a letter from the Provo Power that states they have been contacted. Energy generation's growing nationwide. We see tons of permits coming in through the city for solar-mounted panels on homes. And as you divide that off, solar energy is pretty well done now, under the current ordinance. Really, anything you build within the building envelope for the main building or for accessory buildings, as long as it fits within that envelope, it can be permitted. There's no issue with it. And so that's fairly common. And we've seen a lot of those go up in the last couple of years. And I think we approved another five or six or seven last week. You've probably seen them in your own neighborhoods with the solar panels. The other one that comes up is the wind-generated areas. And we put that on -- I should go back on the ones on the wall. This was divided into three sections. The one was standards would apply for all systems, standards that apply for the small wind energy systems, which is area -- or item two. And then three was for the solar. And it's okay, we can just concentrate more on the wind energy. Wind energy, really, there's two, well, maybe three main inputs we looked at. One's the aesthetic, how high they are, you know, what size they are, how it affects your neighboring properties. Second one deals with the decibels or the sound that could be generated by wind generators. And then the third was any safety considerations for adjoining properties or even the property itself, what interference you would have, such as with power lines or if they had guy wires holding the towers up. Now, in looking at this, we really wanted to bring this to you tonight, look at ideas and thoughts, not necessarily to get a final recommendation tonight, but maybe to look at situations and refine that a little bit. And if I can go to the end here. This just gives you a couple of pictures of different types of wind generators. You know, they're not always the propellers like you see on the upper right, but you get the vertical rotators, and then you get even unique ones that are kind of shown on the home on the left. Then you get actually fancier ones, you know, that look more artistic in a sense. And then they're, you know, can evolve into myriad of things. If you look at commercial ones versus, you know, residential ones, as to where they're allowed, which zones they could be allowed in. Certainly, some of those look a little more intrusive, maybe, than they even would in some of the residential situations. And then you obviously get the really big ones. Now, the one on the left could possibly be one that would fit into that 80-foot allowance that we put in the ordinance. And that shows on the left. The other one's really become too big for the generation, and they would exceed really what we've had, or you'd be able to get into a backyard, but to show you the contrast between those. But the idea is to really think about, really, what we're talking about. This illustration gives you an idea of what the height is. The building on the right, which is 63 East on Center Street, is 84 feet tall. So that gives you an idea of what 80 feet is, how it compares to, you know, the other buildings around it in an area. You can guess from a home, a home's maximum height is 35 feet, which would probably be the first two stories or so of that building, a little bit taller. Well, no, about the first two stories of that building. This is what the same building looks like from the east. Looking back, you can see the old library building there on the corner. And so that gives you an idea of what 80 feet is. The discussion, I think, we need to have is, first of all, what should the height be? You know, is there a gradient that would even allow in certain areas, you could go up to 80 feet and then down? I should mention, the reason for the 80 feet was principally because you do have to get elevation on those to catch an air current. You know, just having them sometimes off your home, you can get some energy coming off your home and some other situations, if you're by a canyon, obviously. But the height sometimes is just necessary to make them function properly. The other consideration is, should they be allowed everywhere? We did put a caveat in the ordinance that they have to be set back from property lines the height of the tower. So if you went up 80 feet, you'd have to have a 160-foot wide lot, which is fairly large, really, and would eliminate a lot of situations in the city where you could even have them. It would still allow the smaller ones, you could do on the rooftop and other situations. But, you know, the height would really regulate, or the lot would regulate the height, almost. So I guess it's just opening it up, if that's permissible, into a conversation of the height and the areas, and just have a general discussion that way. And just turn that back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxfield. Questions and comments for city staff from members of the planning commission on this? Yeah, Mr. McKinney.
I have some discussion points. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some of the things that I noticed that typically happen over a period of time, dealing with maintenance, I don't know what the life expectancy of these systems are, but I know that, you know, just the normal deterioration of the outside, the facade of it, the painting of it. So what happens, I guess, how do we instill some sort of policy statement that it has to conform to, you know, it has to be repainted every five years or something, so that it maintains its aesthetic appeal? And then what happens when it actually becomes unusable? It actually is at the end of life. Is there a requirement for it to be taken down and dealt with appropriately, so that it's not just distracting eyesore over a period of time? And usage, if it's, as it moves from, you know, from one owner to another owner to another owner, you know, is there a liability associated with the maintenance and ongoing and upkeep of those types of things? Where the, does it become, you know, part of the property right of the owner to provide that maintenance and care? Just some initial thoughts and concerns.
There was a section in there on maintenance. I recall reading that. I can't remember the page. But it must be maintained, and it must be maintained to the factory standards. Did mention paint, the painting of that. But I don't think it mentioned how lo -- well, it does say decommissioning at the bottom of page seven shall be removed, you know, or decommissioned, like a battleship or something, I suppose. So it kind of addresses that. That's what I saw. I don't know, Mr. Maxfield, if there's more.
Yeah, those are the ones. The one abandoned is pretty clear. Fails to operate within the past 12 consecutive months. However, certainly, reaching the end of its useful life could be debated, you know, as to what that means. If it's not functioning, you would imagine it wouldn't be used, and something would have to be replaced. If it wasn't replaced, it would sit for 12 months, and enforcement action would have to be taken to have that removed.
Mr. Jones.
On page nine, paragraph D, it talks about color and finish. And it indicates that rust, corrosion, or peeling paint on any component of an alternate energy system shall be repaired and/or repainted. So I think, as I read through it, I, as I started on this, questions arose in my mind, well, what about this? And I'd read down, and they've answered it. Just about anything I could think of is covered in here.
Mr. Max, I have one question for you, Mr. Maxfield, if that's okay? The question is, and I agree with Mr. Jones, I think it's a well-done document. I'm curious, who was involved in drafting it? I'm assuming, you know, Community Development, Provo City, Energy, who else? And then the other question, second part, is, and I don't, I'm not familiar with the products that are available for the average homeowner or consumer. Do these guidelines or code amendments, are they consistent with, and do they allow enough latitude for a homeowner to be able to use them in several contexts? You know, depending on their lot size and that forth, that if someone wanted to do it, is the code so restrictive that they wouldn't fit? Or is it so open that you would have many of these? Does that, I don't know if that makes sense? That is, was there, did you guys take into allowance what the products are out there as this was drafted? And if you could just articulate that? Thank you.
Yes, sir. No, sorry, the first one. Actually, a lot of this came from West Valley City. So I give some credit for West Valley City. What we did was look at cities all over the country, compare ordinances for ease of use, for allowances, for management. You know, we didn't want to over-manage these, I guess, in a sense. And we found that West Valley had a very good one, that seemed to most directly address our desires. We did modify it a little bit from what was there, but it's pretty much theirs. But the thing we tried to look at was really, and again, showing you the pictures there, is the wide range of wind generators there are. We took in effect, okay, what would the impacts be on a neighboring property, even on the other? So try to look at, obviously, the power lines or things that could happen on your own property. I've never heard of one falling over or going over the neighbor's yard. When they're tall, they have guy wires. So whether or not it's realistic to set that distance back, we thought just for any argument reason, it'd be good to set it back. Plus, it would somewhat mitigate the height compared to an aesthetic view from the neighbors. You know, the further ways look smaller, you know, when it's right up on top of you. It wouldn't reach out to, like I say, if it's within a building envelope, you could do it anyway. You know, you could put the towers up on your home, there's no restriction on that. It's just that most homes are, a lot of the homes are built to maximum height in a lot of areas. And so there was a need to, say, increase it, because you have to have a clearance from the rooftop up to the blade height, whether it's a rotating blade vertically or horizontally or whatever. And so it's just really getting those safety separations and working from that edge. But we did try to allow the broad variety. It's not all in one. Now, the one thing that's a little, is to kind of read through, because it tried to restrict it to so many per lot, that you just can't fill your lot up with wind generators or something like that. But one on your left is an example. If somebody had that, well, you've got two generators. Does that count as two, or does it count as one? So there may be some further definition on certain systems, you know, that may have more than one generator, even though it's one system, per se. Does that get close to your question?
It does. And you mentioned West Valley, and I'm, one follow-up, and I'm assuming this is what happened. You didn't just borrow it from their code book, but did, have you, when you visited West Valley or spoke with them, are they pleased with this code, to the extent that it is their code or their ordinances for this? Is it working well for them? Are they seeing increase, but not a dramatic increase? Are there things that they advised us to change, that I'm sure you did change or include in these?
Well, they said the vast majority has been for solar. You know, it's just like it is with here. Wind generators, and, oh, that was the other thing I was going to bring up. One that, like the one up on the upper right that goes on a tower, I've seen those costing from 35 to 100 to 5,000 for the system. The pole would cost you another couple of thousand, you know, to put that up. I don't know how much the electrical system, that's without the full electrical system. So, you know, a lot of it may be the expense. And solar panels have come down a lot in cost, plus the way they're financed now with the people going around and, you know, trading off things. And so I think, right now, there's just been a lot of financial holdback. You know, practicality's getting there, or it's beneficial for some, but others, it's like, gee, are you really getting that much wattage out of what the cost is? And so that's kind of what was confirmed, that they sense the demand increasing, but right now, there hasn't been a lot for it.
Bill, it looked like he had a comment.
Just to answer one of your questions, an amendment like this is typically written by the planning department, planning division, and then we circulate it to all the other city departments. Energy obviously looks at it, Attorney's Office, but even other departments within engineering and just other departments that are typically involved in CRC review, development review, are given opportunity to look at and comment.
Got it. Thank you. Other comments or questions from the commission to the city or staff? Mr. Rowan?
So, is that better? Hello? Whatever. So do we have a sense of what the, why, you asked us to comment on why about 80 feet? So can you tell us a little bit more about, you know, to what degree is it not an arbitrary number? Or is it an arbitrary number? Was that in West Valley's language as well? Or, yeah, where did 80 feet come from?
It started with West Valley's language. And we thought, okay, is that a reasonable number? And really, just try to investigate from there. Going higher, at this point in time, we haven't really done it before. I guess we're reluctant to increase the height until we see there's some demand or reason for that. 80 even seemed like a little bit of a stretch. We held it 60 at first, and we're saying, gee, do we jump up or not? You know, 60 is twice as high as a home, almost. And so that's, we're totally open on that. And that's one reason we think, you know, by introducing this tonight, giving you the chance to go around and look at situations possibly, and get some idea of height, how would it fit here, and maybe apply them in your own mind, that might give us some better discussion that we go along. We don't feel like we need to rush into this, if there's a...
Without knowing the mechanics of how wind-generated energy works, and, you know, as you were saying, you suggested that 80 feet maybe is about as high as it needs to be in order to be efficient. Without knowing any of that stuff, 80 strikes me as on the high end of things. I suppose that's mitigated in part by the other setback requirement. You know, if you have the space on which you could even put up an 80-feet-tall, you know, wind, wind tower, then, you know, maybe in that situation, then 80 feet would have seemed as high. But I'm just thinking about, most of the context that I can imagine, 80 feet would seem really tall. But then again, maybe those would be eliminated from doing 80 feet, because they don't have the setback space. I don't know.
Should mention, the height also goes to the top of a blade. And so, you know, if you had, like, one of these, for instance, has seven-foot blades, even for one of the normal, they're just much smaller in scale than the, you know, great big ones you see. But with seven-foot blades and a 10-foot separation from a rooftop, you'd already have 17, well, you'd have more than that, you'd have 14 plus 10, you know, because you'd have 24 plus 34 would be the 60 feet, almost. So that's kind of, I think, was the other, that's what, and again, that's would only be, you know, if you're next to a roof, if you're roof-mounted. In most cases, you're not going to do that, because the structural problem you would have putting on a roof, you almost always want to mount it off a pole separately at that height, I believe.
And I may have overlooked some of the details in here, but to what degree does the amendment, the language of the amendment account for where it's in position, where it is in relationship to other properties? You know, I imagine if a neighbor had enough space to do it, but then this thing is towering over my yard that didn't have the same kind of setback space things, then it might...
And like, and other than the normal building envelope, again, what we said was, it'd have to be set back equal to the height of the structure. So if you had a 60-foot-tall structure, it'd have to be 60 feet in from the neighboring property line.
Six feet in from the neighboring property line, and from...
Right. On all sides.
Okay, on all sides, okay. No matter which way it falls, it's got to be able to fall on your property. Okay, I just missed the language. Okay.
So that's the control.
Got it.
Mr. Bandley?
I generally like the document. I think it's well-written. I think we need to have something in there about wind generation. I think it'll be kind of self-limiting, just based on the wind profile in Provo, in our city boundaries. Wind is, I mean, if we, if we were sitting on a gold mine of wind, so to speak, there would be people that were already trying to look at this. I think solar is probably the bigger animal, the bigger concern. And the companies are really trying to make that attractive with these different lease options and different long-term financing options. But I generally like it. 80, I'm kind of thinking 80's pretty high, too, on a resident, residential piece of property, but it would have to be pretty big. Just, I've done some stuff with towers and guy wires, and you have to have a lot of space just for those guy wires. So if it has to be 80 feet from any property line, you're going to have a lot of wires running around, too, to secure it, if it's actually 80 feet high. But I'm inclined to just forward a positive recommendation to the city council.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I would just have three comments. I think, as Mr. Maxfield points out, there's a lot of self-limiting factors in this. I don't think we're going to see a lot, a whole bunch of windmills pop up in Provo City. The setback, this is not going to fit. An 80-foot structure is not going to fit on the average residents in Provo. I mean, you're talking about a large lot.
160 feet, obviously.
Yeah. So that's going to limit. And as Mr. Bandley points out, the wind in Provo, you know, we have windy days, but not, it's not like the mouth of Spanish Fort Canyon.
Correct.
So that's going to limit it. But I think this is a great idea, to have the ordinance in place, so that when the occasion does come, where someone puts up an unsightly or an unsafe structure, we have an ordinance to handle that. And a third comment I'd make, on the sound level, it's limited to 50 dB, measured at the property line. 50 dB is pretty quiet. It's about, subjectively, that would be soft music or the average sound in your house.
For example, a lawnmower would be about 150?
Oh, no. Not unless it's jet-propelled.
Oh. What would a lawnmower be?
Around, well, it depends on how far away you measure it from, but your neighbor mowing his lawn, at your property line, you're probably going to measure 80 or 90. So 80. If I were hired to go out and measure a windmill, I would, it would be very difficult to measure it because of the ambient noise that's already present in the neighborhood. So it's, I don't think the noise is really a factor, the way this is written, and it's well-stated, by the way.
Thank you. Other comments from the commissioners? Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will just also add that I think it's a well-written document. I commend the staff for putting this together in advance of seeing a real demand for the wind-generating devices. Surely, they will, they will come, but to have an ordinance in place that actually looks at some of the potential pitfalls and problems that could arise, and have solutions to govern those in advance is great planning. So, good document. I think the 80-foot, when I initially read the ordinance, I was a little concerned about 80 feet being the height restriction. Understanding how the measurements affect that, how the property size will restrict the height of a device, is somewhat reassuring. I don't think anyone would try to erect something of that size inappropriately in a small area. I mean, they wouldn't be able to do it without really calling attention to it. So in terms of enforcement, I think it would be pretty evident that someone was exceeding a height. And whether you want to restrict the types of devices by district, I mean, that might be something to think about. For example, in your downtown district, if there was a commercial endeavor that wanted to install them on the rooftops, whether it's a residential, small-lot residential area, if you, I don't know if you want to get that far into the weeds with restrictions or districts that certain devices apply to, but just a thought on that.
Thank, make sure, thank you. Yeah, we put the one picture back up again that shows some of the commercial areas, and again, there's tacky, and then there's, you know, ones you probably wouldn't notice. You know, the rooftop compared to a cell tower, it's about the same, you know, and depending on the type of device, if you had the small propeller-driven ones, those are fairly insignificant in many ways. Certainly, again, the output level would limit how big those could be, because we have limited that. So I should mention, right now, windmills are permitted in the A1 zone. So that, that's kind of already there. But the question was, would we restrict it a little bit more, maybe in a commercial zone or some other situations that, you know, would it be as necessary there? It was just kind of that thought. Industrial wouldn't seem to matter as much as the commercial ones, the retail commercial areas. So that was just kind of our thought on that, just to discuss that a little bit more.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from members of the planning commission? Seeing none, we will turn the time over to the, the residents. If they would like to come forward and say anything that, that they so choose on this matter, please come forward, state your name and your phone number. And, yeah.
Hi, Beth Alaga, Lakeview North Neighborhood Chair. I applaud alternative energy. We actually just put solar on our house last year, and I love it. I am concerned about the wind power, though. I can understand where the height requirement for freestanding wind prohibits certain areas of it, of it going in, but the residential ones? Can we see the picture of those again? Is that possible? Yeah. Okay, so the residential ones, my concern about the residential ones is that how many of these are you going to have to mount on a house to actually create the energy needed to give it to your house, so that you're, you're supplying your house with what you need? And if it's five or six that you have to, have to mount on your house to feed your house, I don't think people in the neighborhood are going to like something like that mounted in residential areas. I think it's going to be a little bit off-putting to neighbors to have a whole bunch of these all over the neighborhood. But I think it's a great idea, maybe in a commercial district or in an area that's better suited for having something that, you know, like on the mall or the buildings downtown, to have something, alternative energy coming in. I just think in residential areas, these might not be the best to go, yes.
So part of the current wording right now is that any residential zoning district, no more than one small wind energy system is allowed on...
Well, and that's my question about, because it says the system, not necessarily one particular turbine.
Clarifying what that means.
Yeah. And if it's just one turbine that you can put on your house, is that even going to be enough to produce enough energy to go back into your house, is, is my question. So if you do an entire system for your house, are you going to have to have five or six mounted on your house?
System entail?
Yeah.
Have you clarified? Good question.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
One item, whoops, I'm sorry. One item in there does allow one per property, just under the I there, in any residential zoning district, no more than one small wind energy system is allowed on a lot of properties.
That's your question.
Well, that was my question. In a system, how many turbines?
Yeah, and that, that's kind of what it meant with the one area, because the original intent was you'd have one.
Yeah.
But then we saw this one that has two, and so that was the idea. Right now, I'd say we wouldn't allow that if it had one. They said you can only get one. But clarifying that, I think, would...
Clarify system versus apparatus.
Number of turbines, yeah.
Thank you.
I think, the other thing to keep in mind, the cost, as you mentioned, of these wind systems is in excess often of 100,000, which is a lot of cans of soda.
And they do not generate that much for, they're supplementary for the, right now, you know, until they improve, but they're, they're really looked on as a supplementary system, not a main power system.
Other questions or comments from members of the public or engineering? Seeing, because we're just a discussion item, you are not looking for a recommendation for the city council, obviously, today, are you?
You can. It's, it's listed as an item, but we weren't, you know, we were thinking, if you felt it was important to have further discussion, maybe look around a little bit.
We're happy to take this discussion into consideration, do some tweaking, and bring it back. Yeah, particularly with relevance, I think a great point was made, define system in terms of the number of turbines that that would entail. Would that be one like this or two of this, but no more than such? Did West Valley have anything specific that you may remember or recall about that?
No, it's, that's a good question, though, to, to see if they've had problems with people trying to say it's all part of the same system, just because, you know, it's just different mounts, but they all connect to the same line or something. It may be interesting to check.
I suppose one way to think about that, though, is if they have multiple turbines, each turbine would have to fit within those dimensions of, of the lot. So you, there may only be a very small area within your lot or within your property that you could attach that turbine, particularly a pole-mounted one. So you might be able to have a one pole-mounted one here, but given the blades and the size of it, if you were to put a second one in, that might then put you out or out in, in opposition to your lot lines and that sort of thing. Now, the one case with the kind of more canister or the enclosed blades, those may be more workable, but certainly something to consider.
And what you said made me think of one other thing. We probably ought to have something in there for situations where there's maybe a lot reduction. Say you had a five-acre piece and you develop three of the acres and your hole's no longer, the distance changes or something. We probably should have something in there, if the situations change, you have to, you know, you can't grandfather it or anything like that.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one other thought. Current, current law allows amateur radio antennas anywhere in the city to go up about 65 to 70 feet, and they have a pretty good size footprint. If you have like a tri-band beam, those, those elements themselves are over 40 feet long, and they're spinning with a rotor above the house. And that's already, already permitted. I don't know the exact height, but I would guess that it's already up about 65 feet and has a, has a footprint or, you know, think of that as a blade. It's, those blades would be bigger than, than most of these turbine blades. So it's, it's already allowed under current code. So.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions, we probably have a motion to table the discussion...
Is it continue indefinitely?
Or, so is there a motion to continue this item indefinitely or until further notice?
So moved.
So, thank you. All those in favor of doing so, please indicate by saying aye.
I'll second this motion.
Oh.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
She seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Jensen. All those in favor of continuing this item indefinitely, as seconded by Ms. Jensen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that would like to keep talking about this item?
I move that we adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.